I'll call the Dixon County Commission to order the November 3, 2016 meeting. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one addition to our agenda today, and that would be a resolution to oppose the speed zone on Union Road. So I move that we approve the agenda with that addition.
Second.
Been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda, early minutes of the October 27 work session and regular meeting. Payroll of $254,283.71. Fund expenditures, $174,644.03. Utilities, wire payments of $9,016.96. Abatements of $247.44. I'd move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved in seconds. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Before we start the commission meetings, I see we have one high school here. Would you stand and state your name and what high school and class you represent?
I am Brianna Stevens. I go to Abilene High School.
And this is a...
Governor's class?
Governor's class.
Yeah, I have to go to eight meetings, so it's hard to remember. This is my third one.
Okay. So what are the other two you've been to?
The library. They just talk about like how people are stealing stuff and they're putting up more cameras and everything, so, yeah.
And what do you expect to get from this meeting?
Knowledge, yeah, a lot of knowledge.
Okay. Well, you should have been the last one then.
Well, you passed the test pretty good there.
A lot of times I give the students a lot more dis... I don't say "dis" can stand for that, but I'm not going to see you do that today.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners' comments and committee reports. Craig, why don't you start this time?
Yeah, Brad and I, well, all three of us commissioners attended McPherson County. I really appreciated the regional meeting we got. Brad and I were at Brown's home yesterday at 1:00. Probably nine, 10 people there. Pretty good discussion. I think everybody we talked to saw the need for it.
Very supportive, yeah.
Yeah. I thought it was well-attended, and like I said, I've talked to Brad too. Are we gonna tell him to be available, or are they even meeting anymore?
They weren't excited about it, let's put it that way. They had their next meeting that they would be available to have us do would be in January.
Yeah.
But she said, you know, it'd have to be about 10 minutes and we're out of there.
Yeah.
So, but she really wasn't really excited about it, so...
Well, I might talk to Earl. Yeah. Tonight, the three commissioners, we've got the North Central Regional County Commission, my annual banquet down at the eyes in our center, so we will be attending that.
And you're a director of that board?
Correct, yeah. I'm on the board, I'm not the head of the director.
Oh.
Member of the board.
Oh, okay.
That's all I have, Earl.
Okay. Lynn?
Kind of really just similar to the report on the McPherson meeting, I might mention that's something that we had started here in Dixon County where we invited surrounding counties to come in so we could kind of discuss what we're doing and maybe get some ideas and really kind of a proactive type meeting. And one thing that was very impressive in McPherson County, they had their economic development person or director tell us some of the things that they're doing in McPherson to promote growth and invite industry, and they really seemed on target because they had a website, but you know, they also had identified people that they were talking to, and they really had a lot of successes. And so I think it was something that we can kind of borrow some of their ideas and have some follow-up interaction with them. And it's a close enough county that even though they're larger, there maybe are some similarities. So anyway, I thought that particular part was really helpful. And then I do plan on attending that meeting tonight. This is a little bit further ahead, but November 14 through 18, we have our meetings for the Kansas Association of Counties, and the annual meeting is going to be in Overland Park. And so that's something that some of us would be going to. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I was, like I say, very impressed with the industries that McPherson County has been able to attract, and also I guess I was more impressed with the kind of salaries that the employees received. It seemed like they were good-paying jobs, and they also kind of told us the amount of employment that drives into McPherson. So you know, it's benefiting other counties that they have those jobs available there in McPherson.
Yeah, those manufacturing firms and businesses, their average pay scale was pretty good, so that's impressive.
Yeah. I think we covered the meeting tonight that we all be attending, and so we move on to presentations, petitions, proclamation, and other public comment. Guess we had none today, so Brad, why don't you start your report?
Okay, last week we had our auction, Purple Wave auction off our two EMS vehicles that we had replaced, and I think I'd estimate $12,000 to $15,000 that we get for those that went too far off. Top of rough $4,800, the suburban was $7,900, so we totaled $12,700, which I was pleased with. One of those has been picked up and the other one's picked up today. Actually, one of them went to the guy from Chapman, and the other one's going to Russell. Dustin, well Dustin was back last Tuesday helping Tim get oriented and finishing up some work, and when he returned, he had sent me a message on the topic of the reservation that Jefferson County uses, made a suggestion that we might want to look at, and that is that on the zoning applications, permit applications, city Jefferson County, they require before you can get a building permit or a condition release permit or any type of permit, that the applicant be paid up full on your personal property taxes and amount of real property taxes, which I think is a really good idea. And not that we have a lot of them that would get permits that maybe aren't paid up, but again, it would give us, much like the other process we redid here recently by state law, that it would give us another reason to check to make sure people are paid up and give them some incentive if they're wanting to add a building or do something to get their permits or get their property taxes paid. So I'd say a copy of that to Doug Heath's review, so that may be something we bring back to you here in the near future to amend that resolution, the permitting resolution to include that paragraph that says that people have to be paid full on their personal and property taxes. So I don't really have any thoughts on that, off the top of your head or not, but it sure seemed like a kind of an obvious and a good idea, so. We met Tuesday with the NRCS personnel, and we actually went out, had a meeting with them, reviewed the project, and went out on site, looked at all the sites in preparation for finishing the contract documents and getting the RFP ready to issue. We're hoping to have that document, the specs for the project done by the first of next week. NRCS is putting that together, they're getting very close. And then we are going to be ready to put up, review it, and put the RFP out for vendors to look at and submit bids. We're planning on allowing two weeks' time and dealing with a deadline approximately two weeks after that for bid submissions. So we would, we're putting them on the website today, and for purposes of Kathy and the reflector, the fact that if you are a contractor that has the capability or any interest in doing any of those cleanups or submitting a bid on those, contact our office now and get on the list, so as soon as that RFP becomes available, we can send you the bid packet and expedite that process so somebody doesn't miss that. So we want all viable and eligible contractors that are interested to be able to get a copy of the bid specs. Two weeks is, you know, on a typical project, is pretty quick to get bids back, but we're hoping, you know, we're under that timeframe, and we're hoping that we can buy a lot in two weeks, that's sufficient that somebody can get out, look at the job site, put together what they think the requirements are, and submit a bid. So we're getting real close to that. Our intent is to have bids done and awarded by the first of December or that week following so that we can give people time to get things in place and hopefully around the first of the year, get in and get the process going and have them done by, you know, our timeframe. So I think that's realistic, but we want people to know that we're getting ready to have those RFPs ready, those bid specs ready to issue, and to go ahead and call our office and get on the list if they have any interest in all looking at them so we can send them information and not have to wait to put it in the paper and hope somebody sees it or by word of mouth they happen to mention it somewhere.
Right.
We're gonna have six different sites, there's six different packets.
Okay.
We've broken the, there's actually 10 sites, one of which we're gonna be doing, as you're aware. So there's nine sites, different physical sites, but we've broken them up into six packets because a couple of the sites are on the same parcel of ground or real close to each other, so, and they're small where one bidder should be able to do several of the sites. So a couple of them are bigger, so we've broken them up into individuals. So we think they're all of a size that even the smallest contractor could be an age. So we're hoping to get some of the local contractors that are interested and generate some local business here from them as well, so.
Is this the site that's clear on the west edge, are we gonna get permission?
Site number one is not going to go.
It's not gonna go?
They're not interested in doing it, and site number 10 is another one we're not going to do. The owner of the property is a hunter from Missouri, and he comes back and he wants to live with the way it is to maintain more cover and stuff for that, for his upwind gain. So we've told him, we've made it very clear to him, it's a one-time chance, and if you pass it up at this point, it will come again, so, and they're aware of that. So two of the sites won't be cleaned up, and they're relatively small sites in comparison to the others, so.
At our meeting, McPherson Commissioner from Slayne County wanted to make sure that we got the husband and wife signed on permission to go on their ground. Was that the case on our watch?
The husband and wife?
Both signed it?
Not necessarily, and most of what we have are trusts. Most of the property are in a trust, and the trustee of the trust or the power of attorney for the trust are the ones that have signed them, so.
Apparently they had...
One of the trustees.
They had some issue that cost them $40,000 because his wife had not signed it.
Oh, no. Was theirs on a temporary easement situation?
I'm not sure. It was, you know for sure, he said it was an easement that they didn't...
Well, a couple of things we've got in our favor. First of all, these are all temporary easements, so, secondly, we're not, part of our agreement with them is we won't be on any row crop land, so we won't be damaging anything that's money generating. We're not paying out any damages on any of the sites, although we've been asked on a couple of if there's any of us to do that. So if there's wheat or something, you know, milo or something like that that is a money-generated crop, we're not going on that property, and that'll be part of the specifications the contractor will be told. You need to stay in the pasture, you need to stay in the stream bed on areas that are not part of the crop land, so that may eliminate, and did eliminate a lot of the concerns, so. Whereas I don't know what kind of project they were dealing with.
They never said.
Didn't say.
If you had property that cost some crop production, that might have got somebody's attention pretty well.
Well, apparently it was just the wife that didn't sign, and it caused him a problem, so I don't... What we're talking about for sake of our guests is the tornado that went through, a lot of tree damage in the creeks along that area up there, north of Abilene when the tornado went through, and we're in the process of going in and cleaning out the stream beds so that trees don't wash down and plug our bridges up and/or do damage to our bridges, and so it's just a cleanup project that we're...
It's clear across the county, about 2,700 Avenue, from north of Solomon to south of Chapman, so.
Due to the tight frame of your bidding process, Brad, would it be hold you to have a pre-bid meeting?
We will have.
Okay.
We're gonna handle it the same manner we do a bridge project. We will have a pre, well, we'll have a bid meeting, everybody will be invited to that, we'll have a bid opening to where we'll go through and open it.
No, no, I'm saying before the bids are even out.
Let them know what they're getting into, make sure insurance and scope of the work.
Yeah, no, maybe.
I mean, I'm just, you know, you may not get in, I'm not talking, you know, before even had the bid, a pre-bid, you know, rather than having a bid opening, you know, something so they'll know.
There are questions?
Yeah.
That might not be a bad idea just to get everybody together to work, because we're gonna have a lot of questions, I'm sure.
Right.
And maybe, like I say, notify the contractors that we know about, that they know about...
I know we talked about going out on site with them if we need to, and maybe we can go all at once.
Well, I just, it, me, it shortened up the, you know, the time, if you could have some people, you know, could have a meeting here, you know, have a picture of it and, you know, whatever.
Yeah, yeah. Hadn't thought about that, but that's a good idea, so.
Well, like I said, it might not work out, but...
Might create more interest if they know what they're getting into, but how are we gonna determine the site that we do?
We've already determined it.
We just determined it.
Site three is the one we're gonna do, and I'll tell you how we determined it. We looked at what time it would take and the equipment it would take of all the sites, and there was only one that was really big enough that would, we wanted to get at that $275,000 mark, which turned 25 percent, and there was one that came close to that, so that's the one we paid for.
Okay.
So we didn't, the others wouldn't, we would have had to do multiple sites to get to that dollar amount on the others, and this is all on one site, so we only have one burn location and things, so it's conducive to us, dollar amount, location, logistically, so that's what we used to select it, so. And it remains to be seen, but our cost estimates we think will be within $15,000, $20,000 of our match, and we may have to come up with a little money to make it up. And you know, if it didn't go the way we planned, we may be over too, you know, but that's one of those risks you take when you're looking at those projects.
Yeah.
But that's what we used to select it.
Okay.
It's actually, the one we're looking at is, if you're familiar with Chase's Repair Shop is up on 2,700, it's just east of, east of that, the one that goes north around, kind of off 27, from 2,700.
Oh, we're down there by, yeah. Well, and Grove is and stuff in there.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the one we're looking at, so. Okay, you've also got the year-to-date staffing reports. We've had a couple new hires that we've been able to fill those positions, we'll get you informed on that. We do have one opening in the appraiser's office as of yesterday with one of the new hires that did not work out, and so that's not reflected on the report, but everything's, other than that position, I think we were full of old staff, so changed that pretty quick. We also have the year-to-date cash balances report, and in talking to Janelle, everything is looking very good there as well this month. Nothing, if you go through the departments and look at percentages of what's left, everybody's doing an exceptional job of managing their budgets, and they're right in line with where they would be. Core of an autopsy, of course, is one of the budgets. We've had a bad year of people dying, I don't know why, but it is what it is, and, which is not unusual, we were over last year in the second category. So we have one that's kind of out of whack on the back page, and that is the zoning, and for some reason, we don't know why, it didn't, the computer didn't include the zoning budget in the right category, or Janelle's got her spreadsheet pulling it out of the wrong category. We have budget money in our budget for zoning, so it's not a concern, but for some reason it only showed there was $600 in the zoning budget for the year, and so it shows that we're way over budget. She's trying to get that figured out with Sherry, but we think that's a computer error, so, because it wasn't there last month when we generated it, so it was correct. As far as sales tax, it's staying consistent, it was down slightly from last month with the, last month we actually had a spike month with $108,000 coming in. This month we had $101,000, so it was down about $7,000. But if we go, if we continue at the $101,000 to $103,000, kind of what it's been averaging, we're gonna be right at the $1.2 million revenue that the budget had estimated, so we're not concerned there. Our road tax, sales tax is again staying consistent as well. Of course, it's gonna reflect the same levels as the regular sales tax, but that generated $97,000 last month, so, which is down slightly again from the spike the month before, but we're gonna be right in line with it as well as what we estimated, so we're doing fine. Nothing that worries us there, unless you have any questions, so.
When we get ready to do our overlay from Abilene to Solomon, is that around about $100,000 a mile, did it, Brad, or?
No, if you remember, it'd be a little cheaper because we were able to get the contractor to honor the same price on asphalt, which was, that was a big thing.
Yeah, $49 something, I remember the price of the asphalt.
Yeah, and so we were able to lock that in. I don't remember what the mile was.
Cost was for mile from Chapman to Abilene, or from Chapman to Detroit?
But I remember it was an extremely good price, you know, so I could find out what it was.
No, that's fine, I just wondered.
And we'll do that as soon as the weather allows, it's spring, so the road's gonna be in pretty good shape. If you've driven it, the guys put cracks in it, we'll repair them, and that's what they're doing for now, for this winter, but getting in shape for the overlay, you know, in the springs.
Well, I don't want to get into micromanagement, but if we, you know, if we've got the money, if, you know, like a fair road from Old Forty to Interstate, I mean, if we would need to be, you know, if we get it the same price...
Get what the price is there?
Right, yeah, I mean...
I can have Mark and John look at that and see what...
You know, because that's one of the ones that's right on the, you know, the mile and a half would be all it take.
Yeah, and get it up to see where we masthead sealed it from there north, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't looked at, so, so far the meeting, the one we did Tuesday, I mean, we've explained to all about the sales tax, I started out with the sales tax, and because the last time we were out and talked to these groups, we were asking for the approval on the sales tax, and kind of use that as a segue to get into why we're there. People seem to be real pleased with what they've seen so far, so, especially that striping.
Yeah.
The comments we get from the older, the clientele that...
I'll tell you, driving at night, that is very important, driving at night, because like I say, I don't like to drive at night that well, but boy, that stripe, especially, like I say, it just shows up at night.
And our mowers are continuing to work to do the final mow out, although it's going slow.
I don't know, I shouldn't make comments to deal, but I've had about three or four people appreciate the mowing out with the deer running and stuff, that appreciate the mowing out the ditches.
Speaking of deer, we did have an accident, one of the sheriff's investigative gears hit a deer earlier this weekend. It was, it was an older vehicle that we, it was one of the dirt task force, and it was a vehicle that we purchased from State Service a number of years ago. Forward expedition, the vehicle's totaled because of the damage to the front end and more so because of the age of the vehicle. I believe they have a vehicle that they have seized in their fleet that they're gonna use, so we don't have to buy one, but just to let you know, we did have an accident, so. Earlier in your work session, Kevin Murphy was here from TransCanada, and as I briefed you on before, we had applied for a grant, a community service grant from TransCanada, and had received a $5,000 award from them, and that grant is for a GIS upgrade, which includes some software in GIS and also a new aerial surveillance camera, aerial, I don't like to use that drone word, you know, but it's actually a remote aerial camera that we can take video and images, photo camera images or photo images of property that will be used for various different purposes at the county level to include emergency response and mitigation, emergency mitigation, also for planning economic development, a number of different things. So we're very pleased that they saw the need and were able to award us that, and that's what we'll put them to give use for. That's all we've got.
Okay. Doug, did you have anything for us?
Well, the last round of publications are working its way through for the tax sale that's set for December the 5th at 10:00. So that's the, that's the next thing that's going on, be the tax sale, December 5th, 10:00.
How many times do you have to publish that?
Well, there's multiple publications because there are different documents they've done when we filed the petition, and then now that we've obtained a judgment, now we're moving forward with the sale of the property, so we publish again for that, and that's what we're doing now. Then afterwards, we'll do another publication for confirmation of the sale.
Okay.
For your information, Doug's our county counselor. Ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Doug is our county counselor.
Hi, sir.
Nice to meet you. Who are you reporting for?
What do you mean?
She served with Abilene during class.
Oh, good, okay.
Reporting for herself to her teacher, I'd say.
Well, so as an attorney, he helps us with our legal issues, but also updates and advises us and kind of, kind of a backup for paperwork to make sure it's all the way it needs to be.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Nice to meet you.
Okay.
Good luck with your class.
We're ready for notices and communications. This was a letter from KCCA, and let me see, they go into the, but they've also covered some of the KAC annual conference and making sure that everybody gets signed up for that, which we did a long time ago, and also they mentioned that Lynn Peterson has served on the North Central Kansas, the KC Governing Board of Commissioners, and that, does that term come up every couple of years, Lynn, or?
Yes, you're, you're allowed to serve two terms, and so I've served one term.
So it just stated that Lynn can run again, and we also got, and this concerning the tax sale from Thompson Law Office, and either one of you want to look at this, it just lists the ones that will be on the tax sale, and also details a lot of the procedures that the tax sale will be following, so either one of you want to look at that. We also got the National Association of Counties, their county newsletter, and also got a magazine here at the Kansas Sheriff, the official publication for Kansas Service Okay, we're ready to move on to the consideration of a resolution which we added to our agenda today, and maybe I'll just go ahead and read through this. This is Resolution 110316, a resolution establishing speed zones along a certain portion of Union Road and setting said speed limit at 30 miles per hour and providing for penalties for violations thereof. And this is imposing the speed limit would be on Union Road in Liberty Township from 1400 continuing north to 1800 Avenue, and it states that Dixon County Commissioners does possess the authority to amend the posted speed limit on certain county and township roads, therefore be it resolved that there is hereby established a 30 mile per hour speed limit on Union Road between 1400 Avenue and 1800 Avenue. Be it further resolved that the... hundred Avenue and eighteen hundred Avenue. Be it further resolved that the Dixon County Road and Bridge Department shall erect the appropriate speed limit signs along said portion of the mentioned roadway. Be it further resolved that anyone violating the, the speed limit shall be assessed a fine in the amount pursued to the Kansas statute for speed violations. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect upon its passage by the Board of County Commissioners of Dixon County after publication in the official county newspaper and upon installation of the appropriate signs.
And township people had come in this morning, but they've also been very communicative with the people there at the quarry. And it's just that there's heavy trucks going down the road and the rate of speed that they're going, it, it tears the road up. So there's more maintenance issues, but also it's a safety issue just to have them slow down to the thirty mile per hour. So it seems to make sense for that particular area. And, and I like the fact that they have talked to some of the management at the quarry to, you know, kind of have an understanding that it's, it's kind of for the greater good of everybody there. But, you know, the safety aspect and road maintenance is a very compelling argument.
And I think they also, the quarry has agreed to pay for the signs.
And installation.
And installation also. So it's.
As part of our conditional use permit agreement?
Yes.
I'd move that we adopt Resolution one-one zero-three-one-six for the speed limits for that portion of Union Road.
Second it.
Anybody who's seconded, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Craig, you forgot to ask somebody about your-
All right, well, I just, I was just threatening her.
I'm just trying to get you into the party.
I'm a sidekick kind of person.
No.
I'll tell it if you want.
Well, Barb, as the county clerk, how has the advanced ballot voting been going?
It's been very brisk. Since October the nineteenth, when advanced voting started, we've had nine hundred and one people walk in and vote. And yesterday was kind of a record. We had a hundred and thirty-nine come in just yesterday. We've mailed out six hundred and seventy-one ballots. Three hundred and ninety-seven have been accepted. Twenty have been rejected because they went to the wrong address or the people did not sign the ballot or the envelope when it came back. And there are two hundred and fifty-four ballots that are still out there somewhere.
When did they have, when did the mail-in ballot have to be in by?
All ballots have to be into my office by seven PM Tuesday night, election night.
Night, okay.
I don't know if it's an oversight that they forgot to sign it, but are there some secure concern that it's not a secret ballot if they sign it? So, I mean, what's the safeguard?
I don't know if they think that, but, I mean, there's big arrows and stuff and it says sign here. But I don't, I've had people comment that they're afraid that we'll know how they vote. Well, I'm going to reassure people that we do not know how they vote. When we get those envelopes in, they're sliced open, the envelope goes over here, the ballot goes over here. Nobody sees how anybody voted. Nobody has time to look at how people have voted. So.
And that's just a state law that they sign that?
Yes, yeah, yes.
So it's not our county, it's the whole state?
No, it's, it's-
It's set up that way. So.
So if it's not signed, it doesn't count. Is that correct?
And it's just like when you go and vote in person, you sign your name.
Right.
So, I mean, it's just a record.
And that's just so we can give you voting credit history.
Okay, is there any other business today?
I move it adjourned.
Second. That moved and seconded, we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.